Will everyone please rise? Thank you, everyone, please be seated. Of course you're seated. We have a very happy event tonight and I ask Sergeant Ziegler to come forward. Chief, do you want to make any preliminary remarks?
Uh, hold for the second.
Pardon me?
You said, "Hold."
Okay, thank you. Pursuant to the power from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the County of Bucks, and the Township of Doylestown, I am proud to administer the oath of Lieutenant of Police. Sergeant, please repeat after me. I, Sarge- Charles H. Ziegler-
I, Charles H. Ziegler-
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States-
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania-
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania-
And the ordinances of Doylestown Township against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
And the ordinances of Doylestown Township against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
And enforce the law without consideration to a person's race, color, sex-
And enforce the law without consideration to a person's race, color, sex-
Religious creed, sexual orientation, and age-
Religious creed, sexual orientation, and age-
National origin, ancestry, handicap or disability-
National origin, ancestry, handicap or disability-
I, Charles H. Ziegler-
I, Charles H. Ziegler-
Do solemnly swear that I take this obligation freely-
Do solemnly swear that I take this obligation freely-
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion-
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion-
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of Lieutenant of Police with fidelity-
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of Lieutenant of Police with fidelity-
Well, congratulations, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
First and foremost, I'd like to recognize and thank the town officials for their dedication and work ethic which has evolved throughout the past seventeen years. In my opinion, the decision was easy to promote today. Now, as you formally transition into the shared role, we bear a commitment to never forget what we obtained from it. But in the warm work of remembering work ethic, we treasure your morals and help to achieve your purpose successfully. From this day forward, it is our job to push each other and all roads so as to keep each other grounded. And it is today's important law enforcement requirement to stay able to protect Kane and to continually find new ways to do things. I promise to continue the pressure and the rest of our staff to do the best that we can do. We must not only- we may not always agree, but lots of decisions that are made, but we must always remember that all decisions need to be made to build a real nation, and that the real nation should always figure out its own path. Congratulations to the board. As we move forward, last several months across America, law enforcement hasn't been the best. We've made mistakes, but we're always striving at better. Tonight, I don't really give out a lot of commendations. It's not my thing. But when you face an incident that will probably be a once-in-a-lifetime incident in the entire county or in the entire lifetime, I think it deserves recognition. So, that being said, I have five different groups of commendations that I don't think about. And I'm going to take the time tonight because I think they deserve it, to read each one individually, okay, and recognize them. The first group is my former officers that responded to Doylestown Hospital during the pandemic. Um, I'm very interested in what the question is. Whereas on August 3rd, 2012, and I'm going to botch it anyway, Hurricane Isaiah made landfall in Lucional Beach, North Carolina, and began to travel up East Coast towards the tri-state area. Whereas on August 4th, 2020, Hurricane Isaiah was denigrated for tropical storm and the National Weather Service issued multiple tornado warnings for various locations within the double around. Whereas on August 4th, 2020, approximately 11:00 a.m., Isaiah spawned a tornado and a touchdown in Doylestown, which caused extensive damage to the grounds of Doylestown Hospital, the pavilion, and Children's Village daycare, which required evacuation including 158 children and 47 staff members from Children's Village daycare. Whereas Squad D members also Brian Lomond, Officer Patrick Curran, Officer Herschel, and Squad D member Detective Corporal Chris Power, who have committed to safeguarding the quality of life in the residents of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and Doylestown Township, were on duty and responding to assist. The members of Squad D and Squad D displayed a high-level professionalism and cooperation, working with the zone community as well as with multiple outside agencies, setting up a perimeter, coordinating evacuation efforts at Children's daycare, your quick response to coordinator efforts directed at the goal of bringing this incident to a successful resolution. Therefore, I formally recognize your dedication to public safety, continued support of the mission of Doylestown Township Police Department, and the residents of Doylestown Township this 18th day of December of August 2000, I'm sorry, August 2001. First we add, Officer Brian Lomond, I think he's only a day back, he's out of the area. Okay, here's the next, Officer Patrick Curran, who's a senior. Officer Matthew Herschel. Detective Corporal Christopher Power. On the day where Bucks County was littered with incidents throughout the county, it was nice to see our neighbors from the Bucks County Sheriff's Department coming to help us. We had no help, and the air rise, their numbers were truly a wonderful blessing. Today, I have the sheriff of the local world here from Bucks County Sheriff's Department, who's fully accepted the commendations for his staff, which includes, I think, nineteen thousand also included. Their treat is basically the same as ours, but I'm going to read it because they deserve the recognition as well. Again, on August 3rd, 2020, Hurricane Isaiah made landfall in Lucional Beach, North Carolina, and began to travel up the East Coast towards the tri-state area. On August 4th, 2020, Hurricane Isaiah was denigrated for tropical storm by the National Weather Service and issued multiple tornado warnings for issued throughout the double around. On August 4th, approximately 11:00 a.m., Isaiah spawned a tornado and a touchdown in Doylestown, which caused extensive damage to the grounds of Doylestown Hospital and the pavilion and Children's Village daycare center, which required evacuation of 158 children and 137 suits, I'm sorry, 47 suits. On August 4th, 2020, the Bucks County Sheriff's Department, who have committed to safeguarding the quality of life in the residents of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and Bucks County, responded to assist. Whereas, Sheriff of the local world, Sergeant Daniel World, Sergeant James Mitchell, Corporal Truce Downs, Corporal Todd Castle, Deputy Greg Appleton, Deputy Patrick Bastic, Deputy Mary Ellen Kelly, Deputy William Klein, Deputy Crystal Line, Deputy Aaron Littleman, Deputy Richard Norman, Deputy Dushmilo Reynolds, Deputy Joseph Rensen, Deputy Sean Roberts, Deputy Scott Sis, Deputy Justin Sturkey, Deputy Nicole Weber, and Deputy David Wu of the Bucks County Sheriff's Department, who are highly dedicated group who worked through these storms, responded to assist. I may add, I did recognize the importance of the toll booth. That part showed off of their thirty-year-old, and I thank them. Whereas, a member of the Bucks County Sheriff's Department, who assisted Doylestown Township Police Department in establishing and setting up a perimeter and evacuation efforts at Children's Village daycare, his quick response to coordinator efforts directed at the goal of assisting and bringing this incident to a successful resolution. Therefore, the members of Bucks County Sheriff's Department are formally recognized for their dedication to public safety and the residents of Bucks County in this 18th day of August 2001. All right, one more group of the hospital. It's kind of ironic that my former officer today, because I think he had a vote apart in this next piece, and I agree with him. On August 3rd, 2020, Hurricane Isaiah made landfall in Lucional Beach and traveled up the East Coast. On August 4th, 2020, Hurricane Isaiah was denigrated for tropical storm and the National Weather Service issued multiple tornado warnings. On August 4th, 2020, approximately 11:00 a.m., Isaiah spawned a tornado and a touchdown in Doylestown. The tornado passed, passed across the grounds of Doylestown Hospital, causing extensive damage to destruction services in the entire complex, including Doylestown Hospital, the pavilion of Doylestown, and Children's Village daycare. Also, construction damage which required evacuation of two buildings, including 158 children and 47 staff members from Children's Village daycare. On August 4th, 2020, the entire state, at Doylestown Hospital, lied, we were actually taking emergency operations. Your cooperation, coordinator efforts, working with outside agencies and resources, had to directly defend or even assist to a successful resolution. The entire state of Doylestown Hospital are formally recognized for the dedication to public safety and residents of Bucks County. Barbara, I cannot thank you enough for what you guys did there. You had a plan, implemented, it was controlled chaos. But in the end, after three challenges, and then your parents back, and that's our goal. And this is what we do for the former people who work for the community. Your office is truly phenomenal.
My name is Barbara Peple, and I am Vice President of Human Resources at Doylestown Hospital. And I have not broken down yet, and I think I might, so. What everybody did in this room, and you see in the back of this room, and Dean Logan, the chief, was unbelievable, and he is right. He doesn't tell you the whole story, and that is that when you walk in that building, there are numerous rooms where the brick walls are on top of the desks where the kids were sitting, and we didn't believe one child. And in less than twenty minutes, 158 kids were out of that building, and it shows up these guys here, the guys in the back. And her leadership of Doylestown Health, we need to say thank you. It's a phenomenal place to be, and work at Doylestown Hospital. But what's even more phenomenal is the people that support us. And that day, and every day, the guys are in our hospital because of different things. But that day was extremely special. And so, from Doylestown administration, I just need to say thank you, and thanks for every child out of that building that died. Totally appreciate it, so.
All right, the next group we have is my own, all officers, everyone, if you had a second. This is what's called, you know, coming together, I mean, it's called, you know, you won't have to. I remember calling work that morning, sitting in Sinclair South Area D Taco's, I think this is the time I sat in the back of the coffee shop, which is our emergency operation center for the township. We actually had time to plan, because we knew it was coming. But the best way to plan is to act about that. And we're sitting there, a couple of calls coming, I'm trying to log, and the people just, I was like, I don't know, I got a couple, I said, I can't, I'm hungry, I'm like, cool, relax. Next thing you know, we were probably about twenty-five all the time, in a minute. So, we had, we had, so we got some media, we had like, so free time, and in minutes, I had a ton of hours. We made a call, and they were here. So, it didn't just end that day, because after this whole incident, you have, you know, you can't just shut down a road, write the report, leave, and hope that everything stays here. It takes days of follow-up to make sure that we send good things up. And if you drive around the upper part of the township now, and still, and still aren't back now. Again, it's a once-in-a-lifetime thing, I don't think I've ever seen it before. All right, so the next group goes out to all my guys that are working at it. And I'm just going to skip down to the first two characters, I've heard it a few other times. Maybe it gets a proper change because we have done, so you understand what they did that day. On August 4th, 2020, approximately 11:00 a.m., Isaiah spawned a tornado and a touchdown in Doylestown, which caused extensive damage to the township. It's only 2,500, 2,500 of township residents, we kind of, I'm not even so sure if that's even that much. We had thirteen traffic signal cars, eighteen four partial road blockers, fifteen residential and commercial properties suffering structural damage, along with cameras that report to bad news conditions. The members of Doylestown Township Police Department displayed a high-level professionalism and cooperation with the dispatch department, as well as the members of outside emergency services and the other various facilities companies, including our public works department. Your action greatly reduced the chances of injury or damage to persons and property in Doylestown Township. Each of your corporate recognizance and dedication to public safety and continued support of the mission of Doylestown Township Police Department and the residents of Doylestown Township this 18th day of August 2020. The members of Doylestown Township Police Department displayed a high-level professionalism and cooperation with the dispatch department, as well as the members of outside emergency services and the other various facilities companies, including our public works department. Your action greatly reduced the chances of injury or damage to persons and property in Doylestown Township. Each of your corporate recognizance and dedication to public safety and continued support of the mission of Doylestown Township Police Department and the residents of Doylestown Township this 18th day of August 2020. Lieutenant Charles over. Lieutenant Christopher. Lieutenant, where do you go? Officer Patrick Curran. Officer Matthew Herschel. Officer Brian Lomond, Officer Jeth, Officer Howard, Officer. Officer Jessica White. Officer Sean, who, from, I'm sorry. All right, now, the last group I'd like to recognize is our entire public works department. It seems like every time we have an incident, whether it be a hurricane, a blizzard, snowstorm, you name it, there are guys that helps out. I have Paul Barker from the Superintendent's Department to accept what we have. All of the public works officers are going to be there as well, pretty much follows up on all. On August 4th, 2020, approximately 11:00 a.m., Isaiah spawned a tornado and a touchdown in Doylestown, which caused extensive damage to the township, which over the 2,500 township residents losing power, fifteen traffic signal cars, and eighteen four partial road blockers, fifteen emergency properties suffering structural damage, along with cameras that report to bad news conditions. Whereas, the members of Doylestown Township Public Works Department, a highly dedicated department, committed to safeguarding the quality of life to the residents of Doylestown Township and worked through hazardous conditions throughout the day of this morning. Doylestown Township Public Works Department displayed a high-level professionalism and cooperation with the community of Doylestown Township Police Department and various facilities companies. The actions of Doylestown Township Public Works greatly reduced the chances of injuries and damages to persons and property in Doylestown Township. Therefore, the members of Doylestown Township Public Works are formally recognized and committed to continued support of Doylestown Township Police Department and the residents of Doylestown Township this 18th day of August 2020. As I said, we have a great group of members in the Sheriff's Department. I'm confident in the promotion of the technicals here, that as we move forward, and as I start to learn how to make my career, that we'll be in good hands. Things change, we embrace change, and I thank you so much, thank you.
And it was extraordinary, and it's sensitive. What I found horrible in that little trip was the PDA officers, Police Association members of the PDA, were out boiling pizzas and water to the most affected by the damage. And they went out and did it, and so, on their own, they used PDA pump and took care of the residents from the work, through great speed. So, I commend the PDA for taking that step. As supervisors, and I think I speak on behalf of all supervisors, you guys were guys that, guys that, guys that, I think, from the, I would say, eyes were good. But anyway, public works, our officers, administration, they work so hard all the time. And when events like this occur, it's great, it's highlight. Every day, the work that they do is exceptional, and it requires in between, so. All their work, we don't say it often enough, we appreciate every day that you're out on the job. Public works, police departments, we appreciate all of your work. And thank you so much for taking care of all of us every day that you do, and especially anytime it's under great speed.
Okay. Start the rest of the agenda. Thank you, Chief, for all of that. You guys can all leave now, if you want. You're all welcome to stay. Any visitor or public comment as they're filing out? I see no hands raised, okay, moving on. Two announcements, the next meeting of this board is Tuesday, September 15th at 5:00 p.m. On that same day, at 3:00 p.m., we're going to have a budget workshop with the Ways and Means Committee. We're going to be closed on September 7th for Labor Day. And then Step Into September on the Trails is the 12th of September, it's a new event, it's 11:00 a.m. And I understand the EAC that is sponsoring that, nor the-
The EAC will be planting trees that morning at the Poole's Corner Park and Ride Lot, and the Bike and Hike Committee is sponsoring Step Into September.
So, it's a joint effort, and I understand they received a $500 grant for some of the work that they'll be doing. Doylestown Township Annual Golf Outing is this Monday, April 24th, Doylestown Country Club. Registration's at 8:00 a.m., and then there's a shotgun start at 9:00. Benefits and proceeds from that event are going to park and recreation programs and services. We still have availability for golfers, four, we have- I'm sorry, can I take your mask off? We have four foursomes available. Is that what you said? Okay, so, four more foursomes are open, and it's probably going to be one of our greatest turnout this year. So, please feel free. Blood Drives are August 28th and September 11th at the Activity Center. I think you have to pre-register, the time is 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Leaf and Yard Waste Recycling is the third Saturday of each month from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00, and the drop-off is the New Britain Entrance to Central Park. The one thing I added to the announcements is that the self-response deadline for census 2020 is September 30th, 2020. Please, please, if you haven't already responded to the census, it's important that you do so because these numbers help get the funds and everything else that we need in the township based on our response and our numbers. Another announcement is the Fido float will be occurring this year at Fannie Chapman on the 12th of September. It'll be between 11:00 and 3:00. There are some details, so please call the administrative office or Karen Sweeney to get more details about Fido float on September 12th, between 1:00 and 3:00. Okay, next item on the agenda, approval- Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes, thank you, Chief. Before we met in the regular meeting tonight, the board met in executive session to discuss some issues of real estate and personnel. We also interviewed a couple of folks for position on the planning commission, but we're not going to make any determination on those positions, or not position, tonight. Okay, next, approval of the minutes from the July 21st regular meeting of the board. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, use your motion to approve them.
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's really hard to hear with our masks, so, it's almost like we have to take elocution lessons or something. Okay, next item is the community meeting room use and fee waiver requests. We have two. Stephanie, you want to speak to this, whatever, what's our policy on this?
It's up to the board of supervisors whether or not we waive the fees for groups utilizing the meeting room. The League of Women Voters is looking to utilize the room on October 12th, which we happen to be closed that day from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., so sort of an in and out. They are asking for a fee waiver as, I guess, a nonprofit organization.
How do we arrange that safely when we're closed? Who pays for that, I mean, what's the cost of the staff on that?
Well, there wouldn't really be any staff because we can automatically now have the doors unlocked, and then they can- doors unlocked and then they can have direct access to this this room.
So there's no cost to the township?
Not really. The only and backup would be the police might be here if something would happen. There's always a phone call away.
Stephanie, on on cost, they do request access to our sound systems and that kind of thing in their letter. Would that be something we would have to have a specialist on hand for?
We can, I believe we could ask one of our volunteers from TAB to possibly be available for that. So if they're not available, we can always have the system on and ahead of schedule if need be, to keep our costs as really minimal.
Okay. Do you want to speak to the other one first or should we...
The other one's a little different because it's coming from the state. This is the Penn State Extension Department of Agriculture. They do the proctoring of the pesticide exams, which some of our employees in Public Works have those certifications, but they charge for the exams and everything. So I know they are, because the Health Department needs the space where they usually are, they no longer have that space. So the first one is a nonprofit group, I understand, but the second one is a little bit more tricky because they are charging the attendees for the class and testing. So that may, you know, I feel they should be able to put something towards the cost, especially because they're going to be here on a weekly basis for several months. So, or every, yeah, every third Wednesday, monthly, on a monthly basis.
They'd be here, they'd be here once a month.
Yeah, they'll be here, yeah.
All right, let's pass on the League of Women Voter's request first. Is there a motion to approve the waiver?
I'll make the motion to approve the waiver.
I'll second. I just have a quick question. Remind me what we did, I know there was another nonprofit that wanted to use, not too long ago, that wanted to use this, and I don't know if it was on, was it, was it a women's place?
It was Nova.
Nova?
It was Nova. They, we agreed that they could utilize, as a nonprofit, utilize the facility. They were going to have their...
And we were going to waive that fee?
And we were going to waive that fee.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were consistent.
Due to COVID, they never followed through, so I'm not quite sure, but yeah.
There's a motion in a second. Can I call the question? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any nays? And on the other, the request from the Nicholas Durback, is there a motion to waive the fee?
Actually, for the Department of Agriculture.
Hearing no motion, motion fails. Were they, there's no motion, so not going to do it. No waiver. Okay, no waiver. Okay. Reports from the solicitor.
I have many things later in the agenda, but not at this point, Madam Chair.
Chief, we have pretty much done. Okay. Township Engineer?
Yeah, I just wanted to report back to the board on the 14 Greenway Drive, the pool permit application based on the impervious coverage. I was able to review the land development plans and the request by the resident, I believe it was a Pam Shum, and we determined that they were about 1,064, somewhere in that vicinity over the allotted square footage of impervious. So that is accounted for in the development's stormwater management. So they will be able to build their pool with a design for onsite stormwater management for that additional above and beyond 1,064 square feet.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Director of Operations, you have a number of things here.
Yeah, I have a few items. First would be the 2020 Road Program Paving Award Recommendation. On July 14th, we received six bids for the 2020 Road Program paving contract. Of those bids, we reviewed them and James D. Morsi was the lowest responsible bidder. This is for the paving of roads in Pebble Ridge, Woodridge for the second year. My bid tabulation and also my memo indicates that we would do Stony Lane, South Woodridge Drive and Stony Lane Circle as the base bid and also recommended we do Pebble Crest Road, Willow Lane, two sections of Willow Lane, the entirety of Willow Lane and also Westaway Lane. This would require that the DTMA and the Bucks County Water and Sew Authority would be completed their work and we would do the paving afterwards. So the alternates, I'm asking the board to approve with the contingency that with giving us the authority that we would potentially remove them from the contract if the Bucks County Water and Sew and DTMA has not completed their work. So with that said, I'm asking the board to award the 2020 Road Paving Program to James D. Morsi for the base bid plus add alternates 1, 2, 3, and 4 for the total of $387,328.80.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments?
Just one question for you, Dave. Is it possible, I've been getting a lot of friendly suggestions from our neighbors on Woodridge Drive about the state of the water drainage system, that it's all rocks in place and that they're starting to flood some of the storm drains down there. Is it possible we could prioritize paving Woodridge so that they don't have that issue going forward first? I don't know what makes the most sense for the order to do this.
Yeah, I think one of the things we're looking at is once, once we get this awarded, we're going to have, we're going to circle back again and have another meeting with everybody, including the Bucks County Water and DTMA, to talk about schedule and conflicts and then we can work out some of the issues with some of those. So maybe it would be helpful if you pass those along to me and we could, you know, take those into account and then address those concerns. Certainly, I think we can work something out, I just know we're trying, we've got five projects going through there at one time, it's massive.
That's what I tell folks.
Are these comments and concerns regarding you saying with clogging of the inlets with debris from the roadway breaking down?
That is part of it recently. If you're there, the the updates to the stormwater system that were dug in there have been refilled with just stone. And there's concern from a lot of residents about how that looks, the unevenness, and they look at other parts of the neighborhood, why did they get paved and our road didn't for that section? And then with the recent heavy storms we've had, there have been issues with those rocks running off into the stormwater systems.
Right, so I mean, it could be a maintenance issue, maybe we can take a look at to see if it can be addressed.
Right. That's why I think it's beneficial to know who's who's has concerns and we can certainly address those. We're just trying to control costs and not spend money on temporary paving that we're going to rip out and things like that. So I think if we know who they are, we can certainly have Paul meet with them and discuss those issues, yeah, we can do that.
Right.
All right, before Ed comes out here and says it, you need to be speaking into your microphones even as you turn your head to talk to somebody else. Okay? You too, Jeff, yes.
Trying, sorry.
Okay, I saw him come out and like give me a hairy eyeball, so I don't want him yelling at me. All right, there's a motion in a second on the road bid. Is there, I'm going to call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? Thank you. All right, the next one is the curbing award recommendation for the 2020 Road Program.
Yes, again, on the same day, on July 14th, we received four bids for the 2020 Road Program curbing contract. This is for the removal of existing combination curb and gutter in the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Neighborhood for, the base bid includes Pebble Crest Road, Pebble Ridge Road, Stony Lane, South Woodridge Drive, Shady Brook Circle. Add alternates in order 1, 2, 1 through 7 include actually Pebble Crest, Pebble Ridge Road, Stony Lane, South Woodridge Drive, Stony Lane Circle, Willow and Turk Road and also the Turk Road Crosswalks. After looking at this and reviewing some of the existing conditions of some of the existing vertical curb, as we call it, out there, I'm recommending that we only replace the combination curb and gutter. Some of the vertical curb over on Stony Lane Circle, I'm recommending that we remove and replace. So with that, I'm recommending that we award, actually, I apologize, I have to go back a little bit. The lowest responsible bidder was disqualified because they did not meet our...
Well, they wouldn't be the lowest responsible, they would be the non-responsible bidder.
Thank you for that correction, yes.
So we'll entertain a motion to reject the lowest bidder as it was not a responsible lowest bid. Is there a motion to reject?
I'll make the motion to reject it.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of rejecting Monster Paving?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate that. So therefore, with that said, I'm recommending that we were awarded to the second or the lowest responsible bidder, which is Ramstown Excavating Incorporated out of Denver, PA, to, for the base bid of Pebble Crest Road, Pebble Ridge Road, Stony Lane, South Woodridge Drive, Shady Brook Circle and alternates 3 through 7, which include in order Stony Lane, South Woodridge Drive, Stony Lane Circle, Willow Lane and also the the crosswalk crossing Turk Road, going to Turk Park. I'm asking that the board do that, that total is $1,042,661.50.
All right, is there a motion to approve the award? Do you approve?
I'll second.
I have just a small correction, I think, on the on the wording. It says Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors at their public meeting held on August 14th, 2020? We might need to change that.
Yeah, that should be August 18th.
Yep, thank you.
And I think the other one is the same, it says 14th.
Okay, can we just strike that on the on the...
Yes, we'll correct it on the final copy.
On the signature copy.
And the minutes will reflect the actual correct date. Thank you. Good pickup. All right, there's a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Turk Park Playground Resurfacing.
Yes, finally, on the same day, July 14th of 2020, one bid was received for the Turk Park Playground Resurfacing Contract. Lowest responsible bidder was Playground Resources USA out of Kennett Square, PA. Based of the base bid, there were a number of a combination of alternates. I'm asking that the board approve this, the base bid plus alternate number three. That total is $80,636.30. We had budgeted $50,000. I have spoken to the Finance Department and we do have the funds to cover the difference. At this point, you know, we've we've identified that this replacement needs to occur and so I'm asking the board to approve it and to spend the additional monies.
Okay. We only got one bid though, correct?
Correct.
And how long does it, was it out for bid? I mean, is this a big difference, 50,000 to this...
Well, again, the 50,000 was our budgeted amount and again, we kind of set that, I think we set that back in 2018 when we did the budget. So it was probably, it was an oversight on ours because it was kind of, that was our bar park estimate, it wasn't necessarily an engineered number, so that wasn't anything that was based on, the engineer's estimate was kind of like, you know, working with that in the budgeting process and the Finance Department, we thought, what would the cost be? Okay, $50,000. We were wrong, you know, that's, we made a mistake.
Well, is there a motion to approve the award of the of the resurfacing? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Is that, is it aye? And no nays? Okay, thank you. All right, is that it for you?
That's it, thank you very much.
Manager?
Ms. Manager? I have two items with regrets to have to report that a member, longtime member of our telecommunications advisory board, Keith Peters is resigning, as I believe he's moved out of the area. And then also a member...
Hutchinson has moved out of the area.
Oh, Keith, yeah, Keith is resigning, but...
Mr. Hutchinson?
And Mr. Hutchinson, who's on our Public Water and Sew Advisory Board, is moving out of the area as well, so...
So let's do, well, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept both of their resignations with regret.
Okay. I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
So long Keith, so long Mr. Hutchinson. But they're not going far, I mean, Keith is not going far. All right, septic management request from Andrea Sustern, our Projects Manager, Special Project Manager.
Yes. We've been running the septic management program, unfortunately with COVID, the water testing, which a majority of our residents utilize the Bucks County Health Department, it's the least expensive test that they can get, although we have other companies available, they're private. But the Bucks County Health Department and the DPD who run the water tests for wells for the fecal call form have suspended the service at this point in time. So as we wind up the 2020 cycle, we want to be able to extend that by 90 days into the new year, allowing residents to complete the water test without being sort of not in compliance with the ordinance.
So the request is a 90-day for Cycle 2 residents?
Mm-hmm.
Just Cycle 2 residents?
At this point, yes.
To the end of March 2021?
Mm-hmm. And hopefully, you know, by then the system will be back up and running. We'll come back to you, I guess, if, you know, we get to March and they're not operating yet.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the extension of the Cycle 2 folks for testing? I'll make the motion to extend it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, is that it, Steph?
Yes, at this time.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, and I'll start because it's our supervisor, so don't let me forget anybody, because there's a lot here. Last meeting, I believe it's last meeting, the board authorized the RFP, maybe it's two meetings ago, RFPs for Architectural Engineering and Design Services for our proposed community recreation center. With that, 17 proposals were returned to the township. The township's Stephanie, Dave, Karen and Ed went through the 17, narrowed the, from 17 to 6. That same group, in addition to Ms. Mannion and myself, met with the six finalists. They were all excellent. With the six, from the six finalists, we agreed unanimously with the organization called MKSD, they're out of...
Allentown.
Allentown. I believe all the supervisors have received a copy of their proposal. Significantly, all the proposals were in the 250,000 plus or minus range. This proposal was 168,000. Apples and apples. It's a women-owned firm and they were very aggressive and very confident that they could do the job based on what they proposed. The, we asked the staff to drill down anyway to make sure that they knew exactly what our our parameters were and if our parameters from 12,000 square feet went to 15,000 square feet, they are committed at the same price. In addition, they had a different feasibility expert and we had, in our interviews with the six, the six, this one feasibility expert out of Colorado, Ballard King, was excellent. He, the group that we chose, Sylvia, can't remember her last name, but anyway, the person in charge, her first name is Sylvia, and I apologize, I don't have her last name, it's in my fingers, she contacted Ballard King and that that individual will be our feasibility expert in her program. So we have the best feasibility expert, the best for the for the buck and we think a superb group that is going to come up with the architectural and engineering designs for the community center. I can't tell you how impressed we all were with with that organization. So with that, I'd like to move that the board accept the and approve the contract for Architectural Engineering Design Service for our feasibility study and design of our community center to MKSD. And by the way, that is not an acronym, that is the name of their organization. So is there such a motion?
I will make that motion and concur with Barb. There were six groups that presented to us, they were all fantastic, but there was definitely something about this firm that just, just from the way they presented to their past work to a little bit everything, but very excited and I think, I think everybody will be really happy with what they put together.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, good. All right. So I'm going to let other supervisors talk at this point and I might, I'll have to come back to some things that I have on my list. Dan, you have anything?
Yeah, I would like to, I don't have a whole lot more to say than what the chief said earlier tonight, but thanking all of our police officers, all our public work staff for the incredible situation we had last week and the work you all did for that. Besides that, the only thing I have to add is we have an opening on the Water and Sewer Board now, so if you're interested in sewer and septic management, feel free to join.
Thank you. Nance?
Sure. Again, I'd like to say thank you, I'm very grateful to live in this community and I know personally, one of the families that was impacted, their house was lifted by the tornado, so they're incredibly grateful to... to Chief Logan and all those who helped, so thank you. We also have an opening on the TAB Committee, um, from our, the resignation from Keith Peters. I also like to thank him specifically for his service. I think he was on the committee for ten years, so thank you, Keith. And also Fido Float should be a blast, and that is September twelfth.
Thank you. Jen?
I'll just repeat, um, what others have said much better than I can. Thank you, Chief. Thank you to all your officers that were there for the hurricane, and for, um, and for the work that you did at the demonstrations that happened the week before. I know we had a, uh, few officers there, and they did excellent work. I'd also like to thank the staff and, uh, Public Works for their work, um, during the tornado, and just all their work in general. And I actually like to thank Andrea for bringing up the, um, the extension to ninety day, for ninety days for the water and sewer. I know it's, uh, a little thing, the water testing, but it really does show the type of commitment that the township has to helping our citizens, uh, during times like this.
Thank you. Uh, Ryan?
Just, uh, another concurrence to the staff and, um, police for everything that happened with the storm. It was crazy, and, um, it was really incredible to see how quickly and efficiently this township acted, so, great job.
One other entity in this township, Doylestown Township Municipal Water Authority, did a superb job keeping all the water flowing during the storm and the subsequent, you know, we lost power, but the generators kicked in, um, the pumps kept working, and those guys were running around like crazy to make sure everything was still working. In addition to them, you know, stepping up, of course, it's an emergency situation, they're going to do their job. They did it well, and there was no, um, service interruption to any resident. They also have a bunch of projects. There's like eighteen projects going on, um, in the DTMA right now. Um, and just recently, they, well, just yesterday, um, they received a four hundred thousand dollar grant to extend the waters main, um, north, um, no, south on two oh two in New Britton Borough. So, that's a huge project for them. They're going to be bringing more water, um, to the university and all the new housing that's going in on the other side of, of two oh two there, um, that will service the university. So, um, kudos to them for their, I mean, they're tireless and endless, and there, there's the pavilion, um, at Ashford, there's the Tabor, there's the Bray Track, there's so mu, and the, um, and the Pebble Ridge Waters. I mean, there's so much that the, I don't know where they have the time to do all they have to do, except maybe Dave Tomko knows how they do it, because you do the same thing. So DTMA, kudos to them as well for a job well done. And, you know, you heard me announce already that, um, twenty-twenty census is September thirtieth. There are lawn signs out there. If you want to take a lawn sign, residents are entitled to take a lawn sign if you, you know, it's just, you know, complete the twenty-twenty census. We are number one la, in last census. We want to be, I think, right now, we're town, we're number one in co, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. That is Bucks County. We want to hold that, onto that lead, because, you know, we're, we're not at all competitive here, but let's, uh, hold on to that lead and, and get everybody in the township, uh, responding to the twenty-twenty census. And that's all I want to do right now. But, so thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is any unfinished business, hearing non-public hearing on the proposed ordinance adopting standards?
If I may, uh, I think I described in the last meeting with more detail that when Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority acquired the Warrington Township Sewer System, one of the locations where effluent from that particular acquisition is treated is at the Warmister Municipal Authority facilities in Warmister Township. A small portion of Doylestown Township along Turk Road is served through that system. So, the Warmister Municipal Authority has asked this board to adopt an ordinance basically regulating industrial pretreatment, which really doesn't apply, but nevertheless, they are making sure that every township that contributes any effluent is covered by the, the industrial pretreatment facilities, which means that if there is an industrial user, there's a whole process, and, uh, I'm not going to belabor it, because really it's not going to have a lot of effect on Doylestown Township. But the matter was, was duly advertised, and the intelligencer for the hearing tonight, copy was sent to the law library, so here's an ordinance, so it would be appropriate, if anybody has any public comment, to have a hearing and then proceed.
I will open up the hearing to any public comment on this ordinance. Hearing no public comment. Do the supervisors have any questions? Will entertain a motion to advertise the ordinance?
No, to approve it.
Oh, can we prove it?
It's already advertised.
No, but I mean, okay, good.
I did. I already advertised.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve the ordinance.
Thank you.
Ordinance.
I thought we had it.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved.
Right. The next matter, and continuing with public hearings, is the board approved or accepted the proposal at the last meeting for your bank loan to People's Security Bank and Trust Company. The sum has been reduced by two thousand dollars by virtue of the advice from your financial advisor, and you'll know that the proposal was fixed at two point three nine percent. So I prepared the appropriate ordinance reflecting it. It's, I, I think Jen might understand all the particulars, but it's just basically, uh, what you have to do when you're making a bank loan. It's been duly advertised, it appeared in the, in the newspaper. And in addition to that, a copy's been provided to the Bucks County Law Library, so it's ready for your action. And again, you need to conduct a public hearing. When this is concluded, I will advertise again that you adopted it. We'll make a filing with the Department of Community Economic Development. We'll be ready for a closing in the end of September.
Okay, hearing's opened. Taking any public comment on this ordinance to borrow three million thirty-eight thousand dollars? Seeing and hearing, no one standing. Any questions from the supervisors? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll make the motion to approve the loan.
I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Continuing right along, it's like Jeff Garten Day here.
Well, it was Chief Logan.
Yeah, it was. I'm, I'm, I'm fighting for time now. I'm trying to get done before-
It's not a competition. We want to go home.
The next thing is, you'll recall at your last meeting, you had a presentation from the developer of the Burke Farm that showed you the new architecturals. You approved it, but I prepared the written decision reflecting that, because it is a conditional use. I'd requested the board approve the amended written conditional use decision related to the change in the architecture for the Burke Farm.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next matter is Mr. Van Louveney, on behalf of the Hammerstein Museum. For some reason, he's married to these thirty days, but I, I think-
I mean, can we just, can we give them a three-month extension?
No, because he has to, he-
They have to ask for it. My gosh, okay.
I guess I'll ask Jeff, he's, have they done, have they submitted the revised plans yet with the change to the?
Yes.
They, well, they submitted the, no, they only submitted the truck turning templates and the trail, uh, proposal for the other side of the road. They have not formally submitted a re-submission for the overall design.
Okay. Um, I would recommend that we grant the extension, and I'll let Mr. Van Louveney know if he needs another extension, it will not be thirty days.
There you go. All right.
I'll make a motion to accept that extension.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Sloan Traffic Signal Application.
Uh, I believe that what's being requested, because when you do traffic signal matters, PennDOT requires municipality to actually make the application. This is for the, I guess Jeff can explain, this is for the traffic signal at, right there by Sloan across from-
Right.
Six eleven and-
AC Prime, that area right there with Kelly Road, so.
So, this, so I, I need a resolution authorizing me to sign this, um, application.
The resolution, you just need an approval of authorizing you to do so.
Approval, authorizing me to sign the application.
Do you need that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All ready then?
I believe the next matter, they're in the audi, are out in the other room, so if someone can invite Mr. Benner and his group in here to discuss the Ashbridge project, that would be appropriate.
Is that Sergeant Scott? Can't see. Chief, is that Sergeant Scott back there?
Yep.
Sergeant, I mean, sorry, Scott Jones, sorry. Can't see these masks on. Thank you, Sergeant Jones. Mr. Benner, you're up. Please feel free to take off your mask as you speak into the microphone, if you're comfortable doing so. All right, I think you just get to your second amendment. I think we have the history pretty much down, don't you?
And I would, I would note that the Planning Commission did make a recommendation to approve the Second Amendment restated stipulation.
They did.
Yes, they did.
And was it amended as well?
Yes. So we've all read these requests for, for the Second Amendment and, and stipulation. But I have some questions. I'm sure that other members of the board might have questions. And regardless of the approval on the Planning Commission, I am a little alarmed by eighty parking spaces for a hundred and twenty-four units, allotted to the hundred and twenty-four units. I, I don't know if that's enough parking for people who are going to be living there. That's less than one car per unit.
Well, the project, the project, as you know, has a hundred and twenty.
Right, forty are for staff.
Uh, yes, but the staff is, um, uh, the staff is staggered. The, um, the Planning Commission, uh, had some of the same concerns. There were, uh, studies done, uh, with this type of unit, uh, this type of, uh, uh, development. And the Planning Commission, uh, after a lot of deliberation, and receiving some, uh, some expert testimony from the projects engineer, concluded that it was adequate.
I don't agree with them. We have a development, and we have had a couple developments in, in Doylestown Township where there was not sufficient parking in those, 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 one in particular in Blueberry Hill, struggled for a long time because of insufficient parking. And I don't understand how you can have a hundred and twenty-four units, you know, like a third of them two bedrooms, expect to have only less than one car per unit, when a lot of people at the age fifty-five and older have two cars. So where are these people going to park? Are they going to go park on Rogers Road, or, you know, are they going to be borrowing time or space from the furlong lamp factory? I mean, it's not feasible, especially when you allocate it. I know you have, you won't need all forty spaces for your staff at all times, but, um, these folks need to know where they're supposed to park on a regular basis. Not, well, today I get to park where the staff used to park, or typically parks. I wouldn't want my own dedicated parking space, and you can't do it with eighty spaces.
I, I just want to add to that a little bit. Um, we, the Planning Commission ha, is blessed to have, um, two liaisons, um, currently, and I don't recall this coming up recently. Can you refresh our memory when this, when this debate happened?
Oh goodness, the, uh, the appearances before the Planning Commission extended, uh, over many, many months. I believe there were about, uh, five sessions or six sessions with the Planning Commission, and there was a lot of time, uh, spent on this issue of parking. But one of the, uh, one of the, um, salient points about this type of development is that although it's technically fifty-five and older, the design of the project and the, uh, and the program is really for seniors who are older than fifty-five. That this type of development is, uh, is, uh, catered, uh, to people who are in their seventies or older. Their, Mr. Grasso, for example, has-
You think people who are seventy don't have two cars, or have a car?
No, I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm suggesting that, uh, the, uh, that the demographic who, uh, who comes to a project like this with a, for the most part, a one-bedroom unit, are not the very active seniors who are in excess of seventy, who are still living in, uh, uh, three and four-bedroom dwellings and are far more active. This is a, uh, this is a project that's designed for a different type of residence.
Where are they coming from?
Pardon?
Where are these residents, potential residents, coming from? I don't mean to be argumentative, but if they're coming from Doylestown or Doylestown area or Central Bucks, they're coming with their cars. They're not going to be selling their cars because they're going to be moving into this unit, these units, and, and without services on site. They're going to need the cars to drive somewhere. And I don't know that you're providing shuttle services.
And what about guests?
And guests? Well, there, there's not enough room to park.
You know, someone, if someone, if they are age seventy and you're checking in on them, where are they going to park?
I don't think this is a feasible, um, project with that limited parking. That's just my opinion. I don't speak for the board.
I was also going to raise the issue about the parking, um, not the parking, but the, uh, traffic signal.
I'm sorry, I-
I was just going to raise the question about the traffic signal as well, because the feasibility study that they did was on, uh, April twenty-eighth during COVID, so I would assume that that's not, probably not an accurate read for that area during that time. We had concerns, I think, both from, um, furlong lighting, as well as the, uh, other, um, businesses on the other side about turning and the light. So I, I think at the end of some of my questions about it, if this does go through, I would want it to be reviewed after, um, after the project was complete. I would like to see another study to make sure that we're safe with a, with a light.
Jen?
Uh, I, I mean, I, I have concerns about the traffic as well, but, um, but maybe we should see if we can get another traffic study done during that appropriate time.
That came back to me from my questions from, I think it was, uh, August third. It said that that would be an option, um, to do as a result. And we could put that as a condition.
Sure. Well, you know, on the issue of traffic, like parking, the Planning Commission spent a lot of time evaluating parking, and their, um, McMahon Associates did a, did a comprehensive, uh, traffic study and compared the traffic flows associated with this proposal against the, uh, mixed-use commercial, which is now authorized. And the, uh, the differences, uh, the difference in the traffic impact is significant. And, um, so that's frankly one of the, one of the benefits of this project, because the terms of the stipulation are such that, uh, if the board were to authorize it, that the development of this property would be in accordance with the sketch plan that's submitted with the stipulation, and it would supersede, uh, the, uh, mixed-use commercial previously approved. And that's something respectfully that I think you should consider seriously.
Well, there's less traffic because they can't have any cars.
Well, I just think that, I like the idea of, whatever is there, that there is that study.
Yeah, well-
I mean, it just makes sense, because doing, doing a traffic study during COVID, during, I think it was four twenty-eight, I mean, I know I got money back from my insurance for not driving, so I'm sure there were less cars on the road, so I would like to see true traffic to make sure.
There have been some traffic studies there.
Yes, and understand, one of the, one of the points of the stipulation is that the stipulation only generally authorizes the project, and the stipulation contains the minimum standards. The stipulation, as, as redrafted, uh, requires the applicant, of course, to navigate the land development approval process. And through that process, some of these issues are going to be fleshed out again.
I don't necessarily have a, I mean, being on this board for a long time, we've, I, I, I think I understand the traffic implications in this area more than anywhere else in the township. I'm less concerned about that. I think we all know what we're dealing with. Um, I do wish it prob- I do wish it, the, the study itself would have been not during COVID, but I, I think more than that is the, the parking. And, I mean, that is a, a real thing. You've got one hundred and-
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four units and eighty parking spots for, like, I mean, the math just doesn't work, so it just, it doesn't work.
Well, if you could just help me with, with what we're talking about, several of the members have referenced a, a traffic study undertaken very recently during the, during the COVID shutdown. The traffic study that was submitted with this project was done long prior to COVID when traffic was normal.
Sure, and I, and I-
I don't know, I don't know which traffic study we're talking-
Yeah, I'm saying-
There must have been ten on this project.
There's been a lot of traffic studies. I'm, I'm not even, I'm, I'm more talking about the parking spots.
So am I.
You know, you know that the residents in this area will be back very heated up, saying, are you going to be parking on our road? Where's the overflow going to go? How do we control the people parking on our roads that can't park in this neighborhood? And then it's going to go to the chief to say, well, I can't manage if people can park on the road. I mean, this is all, you know, it's, we know this is what's going to happen. I can tell you right now, and it's, and they're valid concerns that, like, let's address them now and figure it out before we go down a path that we're just going to have to walk back again.
Mr. Benner, I recall at a Planning Commission meeting, there was discussion regarding parking in reserve. Did that not, did that go away as part of the process here? Because I didn't know if that's left on, or I guess that's, maybe Scott, it didn't make the concepts, and you finalized this?
Scott, do you want to address that? Yes, Stephanie, the, the, the plan does provide for parking in reserve.
Maybe you should-
My, my understanding-
You should have led with that.
That it was some of the parking were actually showing on the plan as being in reserve because it was more than adequate, but that's, that's the way I understood it, and that's the way we proceeded, was there's actually more than enough.
Gotcha, I understand, Scott. But we have to approve the Second Amendment stipulation, which actually details one hundred and twenty-four units, eighty parking spaces reserved for the residents. That's what we have to just pass on, not what may be on a plan somewhere in reserve that's, you know, may or may not be developed at some point. So we'll be stuck with this.
The issue of the traffic study could be addressed by doing one post-occupancy.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Which would then, which would then give you a better indication of what traffic is, but in view of the fact that the stipulation specifies eighty parking spaces, then it's cast in stone once you approve it, so I, I, I don't-
And I don't, I mean, isn't there, can, I'm, I find it hard to believe that people are going to buy a, a unit without a designated parking spot.
These are rentals.
Or a rental, but like, there's no, they have no designated, this is, this is our spot.
Let me highlight the, the language in the stipulation that addresses parking, and it's on page six, and it's paragraph D, and the stipulation says that there will be no less than one hundred and twenty. That doesn't mean that, that there could not conceivably be more.
Well, but Bill, that's, you know, if, if we get to the point where the board's not satisfied, you're going to say, well, it says right here in the stipulation, right here in the court order. So, you know, you can say it's no less, but practically speaking, it doesn't say it can be more either. I mean, I, I think you're sort of, and I don't, I don't hear any issues about anything else besides traffic and the parking spaces. People are shaking their head. We could deal with the traffic study by something post-occupancy, but I think you're going to have to find a way to either find some additional reserved parking so it can be installed if necessary.
And I would, I would say too, just most rental units in and around Doylestown Township, rental units, still have designated parking spots for the units. They are, they are designated per, to, to a unit.
That, that part is true, but this is a unique, this is a unique residential type that I don't believe that Doylestown Township has this type of, of residential development with it, which are-
Which is even more, which is even more on us to make sure it is a, it is a well-developed, well-planned facility, because there isn't anything maybe like this around here. But the center square towers, that used, that went from senior assisted living to rental, to college-age kids and so on like that. They don't have enough parking. So that, that facility is not doing well, because they can't, you can't park there. There are too many units, not enough spaces. So from that alone, and I, I just, I think, I think we're, it's on us to, to make sure this plan, especially since it becomes a court order-
Sure.
-is, is viable. And I don't think with this, with these number of spaces for those numbers of units, it's going to be viable.
I can only say that when the Planning Commission considered the issue of parking, they had before them representative projects that were similar, that were similarly designed for this type of occupancy, more of the independent, older independent seniors, and that the, that the units, that the projects that the traffic consultants brought to the attention of the Planning Commission showed that the parking ratio and the numbers proposed for this project were very similar to successful projects elsewhere.
Well, all due respect to our Planning Commission, your, whatever your projects are somewhere else, they're not Doylestown Township. So I'm, I, I, this is one occasion where I am not going to agree with our Planning Commission on, on approval of this, of this proposal with these number of units and these number of parking.
If I may, Mr. Benner, I think I've been doing this work long enough to tell you that I don't think there's three votes here, and I think the solution to the parking issue is to find reserved parking spaces. So if you're right, and they don't need to be constructed, nobody's going to tell you they got to put a bunch of spaces in where nobody's going to use, but if they're there, and, and we can craft the appropriate direction that when they're needed, they're installed, that solves the problem. But I don't think, all your eloquence is not going to get you three votes tonight.
And you're really good.
Well, I don't, like your solicitor, I'm able to count as well. So rather than force a vote, perhaps the prudent thing to do is to table this matter, allow the designers to reevaluate the sketch plan and see whether there is a reasonable means by which additional reserved parking could be built into the project.
Thank you, Mr. Benner, and I know you put a lot of work into, and your team has put a lot of work into this, and I, I regret that you have to go and sharpen your pencils a little bit more, but we have, we owe our residents that responsibility, and I'll entertain a motion to table.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, okay.
You made the motion.
I need, I'm, I-
Oh, you need the motion? I'll, I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion to table the, this project?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll see you again soon, I'm sure. Thank you so much. Okay, next item on the agenda is the circular driveway for Eleven Windy Way.
Why is this a board approval?
It's in the ordinance, actually, that if a property owner wants to have a circular driveway, also known as a captain's driveway, they need you-
That's the captain's approval?
That's the captain. That could be the captain. Is that right?
It has to come before the board.
It has to come before the board, per the ordinance.
I, I've looked through it, I've looked through the pictures, I have no problem with the captain's driveway on this lot.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I can second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All so long, Mr. Charon.
Would you like to say something?
I had all these really good reasons why.
I bet you were worried, weren't you?
I want to use one of Mr. Garten's phrases, don't snatch victory from the jaws of-
No, no, it's don't snatch defeat from the jaws of victory.
So, bye-bye.
Bye, Randy.
Good night. Okay, now the next item is some Gilmore Pebble Ridge payments authorized by, or suggested by Gilmore Associates.
Mm-hmm, and that was reviewed by the Pebble Ridge Subcommittee, and they did recommend the payment.
All right, there's a request for payment on the Pebble Ridge, Woodbridge Sanitary Project in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, fifty-three cents to Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, as approved by our engineers as well, Gilmore Associates, or, yeah, never mind.
I'll make the motion. Yeah?
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, request materials to be sent to auction.
Yes, we have two items that we would like to send to auction, that's the skid of Hardy Boy left over from the Township building and the roll-up garage doors from the old Fleet building.
All right, is there a motion to send these things to the auctioneers?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then Houff Associates, am I right there?
No.
Township Recycling for Houff Associates, agreement authorizing Houff to collect residential commercial recycling.
They collect data, I believe.
I'm sorry.
Submit to the state for your grant.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we, go ahead, we've been working with them for probably about twelve years now, and they've done an excellent job on getting us larger rewards back from the state than we used to do when we did it in Houff. So my recommendation would be to continue working with Houff in this, in providing the services that they do.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Houff, not Houff.
Thank you. Friends of Kit Castle, we, this is a resolution that reduces the number from five to three. Everyone a chance to review it?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion to approve that.
And I'll second. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
I, I do have a question about that.
Want me to take back the approval?
I didn't vote aye. I probably will, but just out of curiosity, what's their benefit, and I don't mean to belittle the work the Kids Castle Group's doing, but what's the benefit to keeping them at a reduced number instead of folding them into, say, a subcommittee of the Parks and Rec program?
I think having it as a, as the liaison, I'll, I'll kind of answer that. Having it as a subcommittee, first of all, Joe, the chairman, is at every Park and Rec meeting.
Right.
But having it as, there's so many nuanced things that happen, that's happening specific to Kids Castle. I don't know that, and, and right now, there is a need for, the, the reduction is because there's certain expertise that is specific to this, to this committee, as opposed to the larger Park and Rec Committee. And, and frankly, a lot of it is working with Stephanie, working with Dave, working with Karen on, I just think if you made it a subcommittee to Park and Rec right now, I'm not saying in the future, but right now with all the work going on, it's-
Yeah, and I want to propose it right now, I don't think this is the right time to do that. I'm just asking.
I think it's certainly something to revisit once we kind of, but, but I think right now, this kind of serves the purpose of having a nice tight group, and frankly, I mean, the committee meetings are, are Township staff and then Joe and, and myself, you know, but I think it's the right thing to do right now, but I don't disagree with you that down the line, we could look at how it rolls in. It just, it really just, and always has, I think, operated as a separate entity because of everything that goes into it, and especially now when we're like redoing it and there's so many changes happening.
I, I do, I, I think that's a good thing to, to look into though, Dan. Just knowing a lot of subcommittees will do a lot of the legwork outside and knowing that, that the Kids Castle only meets, what, once a quarter, if that, so it's not like there are, they have to have meetings all the time, so even that as a subcommittee meeting once a quarter, probably, it's just a change in name, really, I think, and, and of course, advertising requirements. So it might just be a good thing to do so that we don't have the advertising requirements for changing meetings, but we can put that on another meeting, maybe, discussion.
All right, there's a motion and a second. I'm ready, have we called the question, and we're not going to revisit it, correct? Okay, thank you.
Good.
All right.
And I appreciate the responses, Ryan and Jen, on that.
I thought we-
That was-
Did you both?
Aye, yes.
Is that a yes? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, records retention requires a resolution, or retention, and you called distribution.
Disposal, isn't it?
It's really disposal, isn't it? Destruction, can we just say destruction?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, amendment to the fee schedule for the pavilions, picnic groves, picnic shelter rental fees. So memo from Karen Sweeney to the board. It's actually, looks like it's from Dave Tomco, but, can I? To Dave Tomco, okay. Oh, yeah, from Karen Sweeney. Is there a motion to approve this?
I wanted to talk about that for a second. So we just increased the fees in January, and now we're increasing them again? Is that correct?
They've been- I don't, I don't know if these items were increased in January. Did we increase the pavilion fees in January?
No.
They were-
No, these fees were not increased in January with the other fee schedule, Nancy, according to Karen, but with the COVID and the extra cleanings that are taking place, we believe that it is appropriate to increase them at this time.
Because I think it's a twenty-five percent increase for residents. Is there a way that maybe we could do it for non-residents and leave our residents where they are right now? I just, that's just my thought.
It's, it's an increase that all, all Township residents have to bear, and if you're using the facility and we have to clean up after you, and, you know, it's-
But it's a permanent, we're saying it because of COVID, but it's in a permanent-
Well, not necessarily. The fees could be reduced after COVID when we're not spending as much money cleaning up after everybody.
Can we put that in the minutes then, that we'll review it after COVID?
You can, we can always review.
I'd like, I would like that, because I'd like to make sure-
Additional during the COVID period.
I would like that, because I've just, to take care of our residents.
All right, so would you like to make that motion?
I would love to make that motion, thank you.
All right, so the motion is that the increases on the fees contained in Karen Sweeney's memo to the picnic row, picnic shelters, and any other, and the pavilion, those increases are as a result of the COVID requirements, and they will be revisited once the COVID pandemic has been, you know, removed, whatever, resolved, or when we, yes.
Thank you.
So that's the motion, is your second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, next item is the 2021 MMO requirement, financial requirement for-
You're not required to approve these, only to acknowledge receipt.
We acknowledge receipt.
It'll be in the minutes that you were provided a copy, and you guys acknowledge receipt.
Thank you. All right, so then the other thing is, is the next item is the traffic calming study process and, you know, actually, the, the policy is drafted here. It is a draft. I think John, Mr. Johnson's here to speak to it. We read it. I don't know that you need to go into any detail.
If it closes the board, I'd like to get a little bit of background here. It's my, your-
Yeah.
The current policy that's in place, you can put a circle over ten years.
I can't hear you, you need to put that microphone in front of your mouth, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right, the current policy that's been in place has been in for over ten years now. The problem with it is that it's, it kind of, it doesn't really have any teeth, and the issue is that most of the board members probably were not around when this was enacted back over ten years ago, and we probably, I think, have been a member of the Tac, Traffic Advisory Committee for over ten years, and we've probably been kicking the can down the road for the last ten years. There was a point in time where you had to have a traffic advisory committee to, to reduce the speed limit from thirty-five to twenty-five, even in township roads. PennDOT rules and regulations have changed that, we're able to do that through the Traffic Commission to reduce the roadway into a twenty-five miles per hour, provided it meets certain parameters. We've done that in a number of the roads throughout the township. We've spent countless hours of police man-hours out trying to enforce traffic and trying to get cars to abide by the speed voluntarily. We've issued multiple tickets, multiple warnings throughout the time, and- throughout the time, and it's still not doing it. Dave Tomco and I, Ken Snyder, and I believe somebody else, we watched a video that PennDOT put on about, probably going on two years ago, with traffic calming. The traffic calming basically saying, if you can, if you reduce the speed limit to 25 miles per hour and cars are still speeding and you actively enforce it, you actively educate people, and you still can't reduce the speeds, it's a design issue. And that's why we're here today, to figure out how we're going to design these roads that we do have problems, to get the residents to feel comfortable that they're safe walking and riding their bikes on the streets. So I think Matt's going to do the presentation on what, I guess, the draft policy that we're proposing to the board, but what we're looking for is a commitment from the township. Just enacting this policy and guidelines is not sufficient. We need to fund it, and we need to be able to make improvements on our roads that may cost a few dollars, otherwise what we're presenting tonight doesn't matter, we're still continuing to kick the can down the road. There's a couple roads already in the township that have been identified, and the residents have been extremely vocal. They've been extremely passionate about it, and I sympathize with them, and I promised them that I would have this meeting for you tonight, for them tonight, to at least get it out there, present it, if we're not going to fund it, we got to let them know we're not going to fund it, and then we'll just need to, to, to deal with what we have to work with. But they deserve the opportunity to at least have a presentation, and I think that, you know, we have a certain, we have a certain obligation to, to take some action.
Thank you, Chief. You do have some detailed information in your packet, so I will hit the highlights. But basically, this policy builds on the policy or the, I guess, the approval processes that were in place previously, but they were somewhat vague, so as the chief said, this gives it some teeth, it really defines the process, it engages the community, and that's kind of the, the point of the policy. So there's four basic steps in the approval process. The first one, and all this is based on PennDOT's Traffic Calming Handbook, as far as these procedures. So the first step is the submitter of a request for a study, so a township resident or local community group brings a concern of traffic to the township staff and, and says we would like to have traffic calming. So the township evaluates that request, looks at the criteria for the different roadways and such, and determines whether or not it's an eligible location for traffic calming. The township would also set up a study area of who's going to be impacted if traffic calming features were implemented. And from there, they provide the township resident or whoever makes the request with a petition to take back to their community and to canvas that study area. So, once they get that petition filled out, if they have 70% of the people that are in that study area that are interested in advancing the process with regard to traffic calming, then the process continues. If there's multiple requests, there's a project ranking with different points that are assigned in case there are funding issues that they both can't be moved forward at the same time. And then it's a good time for the township to really pass a resolution supporting further study, because there would be funds involved for designing the traffic calming measures as well as construction and implementation. So that's the first step. The second step is really the plan development, and this is where you're really going to engage the community, there'd be a kickoff meeting, all the stakeholders would be invited, and at that point, hopefully we can establish a community group, a local community group that would be the liaison between the residents in that development and then the, the township staff. The Traffic Advisory Committee would oversee this, and a plan would be development, developed for traffic calming to be implemented. And once the committee concurs with what traffic calming devices and locations, they would then move on to step three, which would be the approval process. And there'd be an open house, a public meeting to discuss those plans and get feedback from those residents, make tweaks, changes to the final plan, and once that final plan is kind of there for the township residents to kind of vote on, it gets sent out to them, again, 70% in favor of moving forward would be the, the level, and all nine responses would be considered favorable to implementing traffic calming. Again, this is in accordance with the PennDOT standards. And at that point, the township would approve the plan, allocate the funds for implementation, and also maintenance funds that would be necessary down the road. And then finally on to step four, which would be the installation and the evaluation, and we want to make sure that whatever's put in actually addresses the traffic concerns that the residents had, whether it's cut-through traffic, whether it's speeding, and so evaluating if those measures actually did, you know, give the results that we were looking for. So that's kind of the summary, I can elaborate on any of that, answer any questions, try to if you have them, and, but I think the chief's correct, kind of looking for the board, if they adopt this policy, township staff would then, you know, implement that, moving forward with traffic calming request.
If you look in, in the, I don't know if it's in the, the manual he gave you, but the local, local traffic advisory committee, which is what I've, I would perceive being our traffic advisory committee, I think that this is a great opportunity to possibly restructure and, and change membership as to who's part of that traffic advisory committee. I think that it could be added on and make sure that we have the proper people actually included on that committee. I know that Matt attends our meetings, technically he's there as an advisor. I think that the manual itself actually has the traffic engineer as part of this. I think we should probably have, you know, just restructure it and have the meetings as an as-needed basis, because I think that the traffic advisory committee as it's set up today kind of spins its wheels week in and week out, or month in and month out. Most of the stuff that's handled during the traffic advisory committee meetings, I'm going to be honest with you, I can handle them throughout the week with my own staff. It's pretty much them reporting, me telling them what I did throughout the past month. So I think that this is a great opportunity, if we're going to continue this and revamp the handbook, that we maybe look at modifying and how, how that committee meets.
Okay. Seems to me, I, I'm, I understand that we have $50,000 allocated for traffic calming measures in, in this budget, in 2020 budget.
I'm sorry, what was the amount?
$50,000. So it's, it's, it's funded to that extent, so the commitment on developing this policy would be that we would have to fund it every year. So going forward, this is, it's like a road expense.
Plus maintenance. So it's the study, so it's the study, the install, and the maintenance, there's three parts of that, correct? And what, are there other townships or areas that are doing this?
There's a lot of municipalities that have...
Anybody local? Barrow, Barrow, Doylestown.
I think what's going to happen is most of the residents that we're dealing with and, and the target areas that we're looking at right now, probably feel that the consensus is, whether you like them or hate them, speed humps or speed bumps, whatever you want to refer them to, is, there's, the $50,000 that's currently earmarked in, in this year's budget was designed, originally placed in there for temporary speed humps, so that we could use them, purchase the temporary speed humps, so we could put them on target areas to see if they actually served a purpose. If that's, if they served a purpose and the residents actually liked them in the end, we could then come back to the board to make them permanent and relocate those to other locations. So that's what that original $50,000 was for. I have no idea, if this thing takes off, how much it would actually cost or how many roads we even want to do. But I can tell you right now, there's at least three or four roads in the township that all have the same concerns and the same arguments, and this, and, and I don't have an answer for them anymore.
And, and the same concerns and the same arguments for many, 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 many years, and as the chief said, they're, they're very valid, so I'm not saying, I think something has to be done. We, we can't keep sitting in meetings every month and saying, these are the roads that are speeding, and it's the same roads that we've had the speeding on, you know, since I was on the traffic advisory committee eight years ago. There's definitely some, some issues somewhere, in places. I don't know what that means from a budgetary perspective, if we can do that, but definitely something has to change. I, I, I am there, I just, I don't know.
It's another expense that we have to think about.
And an unknown expense.
All right, so we have a traffic advisory committee, it seems that we should resolve to disband that committee, and then, but at the same time tonight, we can adopt this policy going forward, spending that $50,000 on those temporary things, right, or whatever you guys recommend?
Well, I think what we would do is actually, because there's, you know, Chelsea Taskman here from Rogers Road, she's been one of the people that's been very passionate about it. So the problem we have is, we, and I have to be fair to the other residents of, of other township roadways, that we would put it out there, that we're going to follow this policy, please follow these steps, put your petitions out there, let us know, first of all, it's got to be a local road, so we're going to need to determine that. Once it's, we can determine it's a local road, then they got to do, circulate their petition, we need to follow the steps in this, and then if we get three or four neighborhoods or three or four streets, then we have to evaluate and put them in a priority order to determine which ones get in this temporary, and if we want to go temporary, that's just my, my thought, if we want to go temporary initially, who gets it first?
Okay, good plan, Chief. Thank you, good plan.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the, the plans that's laid out. I, I have a question about the 70% threshold for petitions. So 70%, when it's voted on, and no one who votes counts towards that positive 70%, but for a petition, it's 70% all around. I'm just wondering how that number was arrived at, and also how we go about constituting the, the neighborhood, the range that has to be approved for that 70%, because it could be one dead-end road that makes, that's easy, but when you're talking about what other roads are impacted, I'm curious how we would do that.
Yeah, I guess I'll start with your second question, as far as the study area. The study area is what's going to be impacted, so you have to look at where you're going to be putting the traffic calming, the request that would come in would say, we're interested in traffic calming from here to here, and so you would look at those residents that are affected by that, if there's a side street or a cul-de-sac that's also feeding that road, then that would probably be part of that study. The 70% is, PennDOT has a range in their, their manual from 50 to 70% for the petition, and some townships have adopted both, 50 and 70. I think the 70, what it does is it shows you that there is a strong desire to do something, and there's a real problem out there that everybody is concerned with. If you put it at 50, you have some that say there is a problem, some that say there aren't a problem, and then you start to go forward with the process, and you start studying it, you start spending money, you start putting the plan together that goes out for a vote. Eventually, you want to get to the point where you have 70% of the people that vote on the plan, that there's an issue and there's a problem that we can solve for them, and you want the buy-in, you don't want, you know, and the 70% there, you don't want 50-50, because you don't want, you know, half the people don't want it, half the people want it, and then you do something and two people move away, and you've got more people that don't like it than did like it before. So those are kind of the numbers that have been put out there, and some of the other municipalities have adopted.
Yeah, it was just, for me personally, 70% seemed kind of high to get petitions, having done a lot of door-knocking in the past, but, yeah, I, I'm just curious of the thought process, but, and I understand like the idea that we want to make sure that the neighborhood's committed to it, and it's just not a few very vocal people that feel strongly about it. And I'm, and I'm not sure what that correct number should be, if it should be 60, 65, 70.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Do you have a comment, ma'am?
Yes, I'm Chelsea Taskman from Rogers Road. I just wanted to speak to one thing that I noticed that was happening in a lot of the traffic advisory committee meetings, is we start to talk about the process of what the approval process looks like, and we tend to jump right away to financials and what that looks like, which is of course important and is a huge part of what we're doing, but as far as what our conversations have been in the past, in terms of, the conversation has been, what is the approval process? Because as far as my involvement, which is more recent as I've moved into Doylestown Township, but what we've continued to see is we get to the same point and we hit that roadblock of let's spin our wheels and nothing happens. I think that there's a number of things within that Pennsylvania Traffic Calming Handbook, multiple options of what we can do, and it's also listed within the handbook what the options are, usually what the cost range is, and also what those options tend to solve in terms of traffic, speeding, and what the concerns are of the members of the community. So the one thing I just want to make everyone aware and make sure that we don't jump the gun here and say, well, you know what, financially, we only have $50,000, we're looking at money for repairs down the road and whatever else it may be. I think all that we're asking for is a clear approval process so that we can move forward, because what we've done in the past, and I've seen documents that date back five, eight, 10 years of what the community has done in petitions and hundreds of signatures saying that we have a problem, we want to move forward with some sort of, sort of solution as a team, and then what happens is it falls, it falls flat and nothing happens. So, again, at least from my concern and what I think we've brought up in previous traffic advisory committee meetings, is we need approval of the process so we know what the clear path is moving forward. Whatever that ends up being, if we decide to follow the Pennsylvania Handbook 70%, then so be it. I might go up and I might lose that battle and we get 68%, whatever that may be, but we need approval to at least move forward with that. Let's get through the first step before we start talking about, is it speed humps? Is it speed bumps? Is it speed tape? There's a million different options, but I'm just asking for the approval process of putting something on paper that we can follow as a unit, that we can work with the traffic advisory committee, with Chief Logan, and with the proper engineers, because then those decisions will be made down the road. So that's all I wanted to present, and also, thank you both for all of your hard work, I appreciate it. I know that it's been an issue for a long time, and I haven't been a part of that, but I do appreciate you guys and everyone here as well, listening and working together to figure out what the answer is, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chief. You done?
Okay.
I think the chief would request that you approve the policy-related traffic calming and deal with the issue of the advisory committee as, as a resolution. If you're interested in restructuring that or doing what you're going to do, you can discuss that at a later meeting, I think.
Is the, are you guys meeting, is the traffic advisory committee meeting now?
Traffic advisory committee, excuse me, we meet every kind of month, every few months.
Okay. All right, well... Okay, so maybe it's from you that we get the kind of restructure that you would like to see, not rather, the committee should come up with a restructure, do you think? Okay? So for now, we can approve or not approve this traffic calming policy, knowing that it will, it will require funding in the future, beyond the $50,000.
But you're not, but you're not, the policy doesn't commit you to spending more than 50?
It doesn't commit us to spending any, but I think, I think as the chief said and this young woman has, has articulated, there's no point in having a policy if you can't follow through on it.
Right, and the extent of funding will be discussed during budget.
Yeah. Okay, I'm getting a, I'm getting a head shake over there from Director of Operations. All right, is there a motion to approve that traffic calming policy is articulated?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving on to the zoning hearing board applications, 891 Ferry Road, and 112 Ridge Viewene, left to the ZHB, but 78 Bittersweet recommend sending the solicitor. It's impacting an easement area in Buffer Yards, storm drainage piping, so I would like to... All right, so for...
You need to make a motion to send us on that one.
Right, so the first two will recommend leaving it to the zoning hearing board, and for 78 Bittersweet, is there a motion to send the solicitor to defend against the race?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Treasurers' report, is there a motion for the treasurer's report from August 18th?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and Bill's List finally, August 18th, 2020.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, real quick, we're next meeting on Tuesday, September 15th at 5:00, budget is, set work session is Tuesday, September 15th at 3:00, we're closed on September 7th for Labor Day. Step into the trails or is... Budget is, is, set work session is Tuesday, September 15th at 3:00. We're closed on September 7th for, um, Labor Day. Step into the trails, um, or is happening on September 12th. Golf outing is happening this Monday, August 24th. Blood drives, um, occurring August 28th and September 11th at the Activity Trailer, 2 to 7 p.m. You have to register for that. Leaf yard waste recycling, the third Saturday of each month, between 9 and 11. And the deadline for 2020 census is, uh, September 30th, 2020, so please fill out your census. And then finally, the Fido float is on September 12th at Fannie Chapman Pools, between 11 and 3. We done? We are. Karen, thank you, everybody.
Documents?
Good night, all.